Good evening. I called to order the January meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission. And on behalf of all the commissioners and the planning staff, I want to thank all of you all for being here tonight. I say this often, this is the people's business, and we need for the people to be here. And thank you. It's hard sometimes getting out on a cold night, but it keeps us motivated. So, thank you for being here. We have a little bit of a different agenda tonight. We are going to be electing a chairman and a vice chairman. And so normally we go into invocation, but I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As is customary at our first meeting, we do need to elect a chairman for the year of 2022. And then, once that is done, I can turn it back over to the chairman for election of a vice chair. So with that being said, I'll take nominations from the floor for the new chairman.
I'd like to nominate Drew Chaplin, our esteemed current chairman, as chairman for 2022.
All right. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Okay. With that being said, I will close the nominations, and I'll ask for all those in favor of re-electing Drew Chaplin as the chairman of the Planning Commission to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Well done. The next item, obviously, is to elect a vice chair. This person will fill in when I'm not here, or certainly someone that would have a lot of experience. And so consequently, I will make a nomination for Mr. Charles Howard to be our vice chair. I will also open that up for any other nominations. Hearing none, I'll close the nominations and call for a vote for vice chair, Mr. Charles Howard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, nay. And the ayes have it. Thank you. And, Mr. Howard, thank you for agreeing to play that role. Mr. McCote is, we have a lot of special commissioners on this, in this body. Mr. McCote, I always brag on, he can give an invocation that makes you just want to go to church tonight. So, I am calling on Mr. McCote. Would you give the invocation, please?
Pressure.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for life, health, and strength. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for allowing us, your commissioners, to assemble here tonight to do the business of our city and the citizens. Heavenly Father, we ask that you keep us all in your keeping care, and you bless us all in a special way. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to keep your loving arms around us as we transact and do the business that you will us to do. Lord, we ask this and each and every blessing in your son. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. McCote. Next item is approval of last month's minutes. The commissioners have received their packet. They've had a chance to review the minutes. I call for a motion to approve if there are no changes or corrections. First of all, are there any corrections or changes that the commissioners have noticed? Hearing none, I'll call for the approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, nay. And the ayes have it. All right. The first item up, Mr. Dudley, I guess that's going to be you. This is TC 20-22-01. This is a request to amend the table in our unified development ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This request, and I almost think I owe an apology to some of our older Planning Commission members.
They're living that.
The ones that were the experienced ones that were around during the original adoption of this. I think I have four on the board that were part of this originally. But we did go through the process in 2016 of amending our code to address donation bin receptacles, which are associated, they're like the mailbox or the big metal bins and collection-type bins and...
You remember that?
I guess, donation receptacles that are in parking lots and around storefronts and such, that are meant to collect old toys and clothes and things of that nature. Many of them serve some of our local nonprofits. Some of them serve for-profit companies. And there was a lot of work and effort that was put into that originally. And then, as you recall, we, not too long after that, adopted our unified development code. And in all the transfer and adoption of new rules, that entire text of that donation bin ordinance that we worked so hard on didn't get transferred into the unified development code. So, code's enforcement has come to us, and there's a need to enforce some of these regulations around town. And when we were looking at it, we realized what happened, and so there's a need to re-codify some of that. So, all of the language did get included in your packet. I'm going to turn it over to Elaine to kind of rehash through some of that language, just to refamiliarize yourself with it. It would, once it passes here, need to go back to City Council for adoption and inclusion in the unified development code. So, I do apologize that that occurred, but I think it's necessary, it is necessary to re-codify that through this procedure, since the unified development code kind of overwrote the old code. And so, I'll turn it over to Elaine with that. And we'll, or Elaine can answer any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Elaine.
Good evening. Can I get that down to my level here? The... Okay, there it is. Sorry. Okay. Basically, it just means we will need to add a land use of donation receptacles to the industrial logistics and storage uses table in the code. And we would recommend, and this is in keeping with the old zoning ordinance, having donation receptacles as conditional uses only in commercial areas. That would be the commercial reuse, the campus, the commercial general. We leave it out of downtown, because they're not allowed to be downtown at all, so that doesn't even need to be listed under the CBD, the Central Business District, or Activity Center, or the DS District. And then we can put them as conditional uses in the industrial light and industrial heavy districts. But this is in keeping with where, the way the districts that were, it was included in under the old code. This is the exact same verbiage as in the original ordinance that filled in the zoning ordinance. Again, that they won't be allowed in the D1 Downtown Redevelopment District. They won't be placed on any property without written permission of the property owner. They'll play, they shall be placed within the side or rear yard, and shall not interfere with site triangles, circulation, buffer yards, landscaping, parking, or other requirements that were imposed as part of the site plan for the premise. They shall not be placed within a designated parking space, which is an issue we do have with them right now. They won't be placed in such a manner as cause an obstruction for pedestrians or motorists, which hopefully having them put in the side or rear yard would negate that anyway. Only one permitted per lot. And if you drive around town, you'll see there's a lot of places that have a lot more than just one. They won't exceed six and a half feet in height. The signage will not exceed five-inch letter height. The name and address of the property owner and the entity that would get any benefit from it would be conspicuously displayed on the outside. They'd be maintained in good condition, kept free of debris, serviced regularly, just to prevent pileups of donations on the outside. And they also have to be maintained in a manner that keeps your people from being able to open or access them without the consent of the owner. And then the penalties and removal by the city that any persons or entity found guilty of placing them in violation of that, they would be penalized as provided below, and they would be taken, begin a notice of violation by code's enforcement. And then, if they don't be, don't come into compliance, they would be, have to go to court. And then the city would take possession of the bins and remove them until the owner came and got them or made them compliant. So this is the exact same language that was in the old code, and we're just transferring it over and putting it in the appropriate portions of the unified development ordinance. And then we would add the definition of a donation receptacle to the ordinance as well. But that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions of staff regarding this change? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing portion of this. Just to kind of give the room kind of a understanding, because we're going to have several, we're going to have one other public hearing, and we're going to have an opportunity for the public to get up and discuss or talk about an item regarding a sketch plan approval. What I'll do is I'll ask if, who would like to come up and speak against this? You'll come up, you'll give us your name. I'll limit it to three minutes. And then I'll ask for anyone that wants to speak against, and the terms are the same. Come up and give us your name. So, in this initial item, the public hearing, I invite anybody that is against the change in this unified development ordinance. You're welcome to come forward and give us your comments. Seeing none, anybody that is far this, you're welcome to come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I didn't think there would be anybody that would come forward on that. Half the time, we don't understand what's going on, but the ordinance... Sure we do, Mr. Dudley. I'll just get you. All right. So the next item on the agenda is...
We need a vote on that.
Yeah, we do, don't we? Thank you. I missed last month, and I'm already getting rest. So, if I open up for questions or concerns and a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this change, but with the caveat that, Mr. Dudley's introduction, I am one of the, I guess, the more seasoned people who were here a few years ago when we passed this, and there were people who felt very strongly about it. And what this tells me tonight is, if we've just discovered this error, then we must not have been enforcing this the last several years. So, you know, I don't know what we can do, certainly as a body. I'm not sure that's sort of outside of our jurisdiction. But I would just encourage the city inspectors to take this up. And let's, it's a problem, and we all recognized that a few years ago. And, you know, we need to, we need to get out there and inspect these things and get them into code. And if they're not, we need to get them out of the way, because they clutter. Some of them don't meet the specs or an eyesore. And some of them collect clothing that doesn't benefit anyone in this area. And we were very specific about wanting to make sure that donation bins benefited the citizens of this community. And so, I would just reiterate that we, we need to speak with code's enforcement and make sure that they're out there actively working these things.
Sure. And I wholeheartedly agree with that. When it was first passed, we did have some traction with it, and we were, we felt like we were getting somewhere, we were getting some results. We had some turnover in codes, and as things happened, it did fade away until the problem built back up again, and we noticed it. So, but I appreciate that, and that is duly noted, Mr. Howard.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, just one other. Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Back when this was first passed, I had several of these on my properties. I had no clue they were there. So when I called code enforcement to get these things removed by the city, I just fell on deaf ears. So, I echo, we need to, if we're going to enforce this thing and do it, we need to have some teeth in it.
And that is part of the code, that they have to have permission to have it on the property, because when we, when we did our research, we did find that a lot of these were just dumped off at random places and didn't know who owned them or where they came from.
And the city was calling those owners.
Yeah.
And the owners were getting ridiculed, and I was the one that says, I had no clue what you're talking about. I rode out there, and there they were.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. I agree with Charles, and we need to enforce that.
Amen.
Is that a second?
Yes. That's a long-winded second, sorry.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, nay. And the ayes have it. Another note to, on the body, the next item is 2022-02, and this is a sketch plan approval. And this is something that we as commissioners probably have the least amount of, well, it's probably our weakest thing up here, because it's really looking at a sketch plan where a civil engineer, you know, engineers and architects have put together a drawing, and it comes before this group of commissioners. And, you know, other than making sure that the fire department and the police department and the city engineers have reviewed it and it meets codes, that's really all we have that we can do. And typically, it is a rubber stamp. It's probably embarrassing to say that, but we have very little input on the sketch plan approval. It's usually the first thing that comes about, and normally we don't have a public hearing. I think there are some people in this audience tonight that probably would like to say something. It is the chairman's discretion to open it up for conversation. And the fact that some of these people are here tonight, for and against, I would like to limit it, because it's not typically on our agenda to open it up. And this is not going to be a public hearing. I'm going to call it a comment opportunity. And I would like to limit it to, you know, three, four minutes. And I'll take two from one side and two from the other side. But I'll start out with, if anyone would like to come forward against the plan, you're welcome to come forward. As you know, come to the podium and give us some... Did you want to start out first?
You want me to do the staff report first?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Yes, this is a sketch plan review for a townhouse development to be located at 1230 Celebration Boulevard. This is behind the Bojangles at the corner of West Palmetto and Celebration, next to the Edward Jones, and in front of the Little Plaza that includes Pieces Boutique. And this is the close-up of it. It is right now a vacant lot with a driveway going through it to access the building behind it. And that building fronts on Festival Drive, but has access also to Celebration. It is zoned commercial general, which does permit townhouses as a permitted use. And the future land use map has the area as auto-urban commercial, which is an urban area generally with commercial, but does allow mixed uses. So it does allow for the permit, the residential use. This is the sketch plan. It's, the directive for townhouses is that they do have to be subdivisible in case that each individual unit can be sold. And it is divided into seven separate lots. It could be with the parking lot as common area. It does meet the requirements of the ordinance for townhouses and townhouse lots regarding width and area. And it does have the required amount of parking spaces. And the ordinance does allow for parking lots to be placed in the front. For townhouses, it is recommended that they be placed in the rear, but it does allow them in the front. And then the parking lot does need to be screened with a three-foot landscape screening all around to mitigate headlights. And this plan that we've received does seem to meet that. The engineering and the full development plan will go through the full review for stormwater and water and sewer utilities, access, and all of that as part of the development plan. But at this stage, it does appear to meet the requirements for a sketch plan. And that would conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Ms. Elaine. Commissioners, any questions?
No, but just for the benefit of the people in the audience here, would you just walk through sort of the process? Assuming a sketch plan is approved, what happens in the chain, what's the chain of events that would lead to ultimately...
Sure. Once the sketch plan is approved, the engineers and the applicant provide us with a complete site plan, which would show stormwater, water and sewer, curb and gutter, all of those details. And those have to meet the code as well, including the stormwater requirements of the state of DHEC.
Once that's done, you approve?
Then, once it's done, then, yeah, then we can start issuing building permits.
And does it go to City Council at that point?
No, it does not.
Or stays right here?
It stays, it's reviewed by staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Any other questions? All right. I will open the comment section of this. I would invite anybody that is against this, come forward and give us your name, please. I already got one.
Are you trying to beat me up here?
All right. I planned for five. I've got three minutes, so I'll be quick. My name is Brian Seng. I know a few of you, some of you that I don't know. For those of you that I don't know, I own and operate Palmetto Smiles. It's a private dental practice there on Celebration and Festival. I am opposing this for a couple of reasons. I first want to start off by reading Chapter 18, the preamble of the code ordinance. It says, "The purpose of this chapter is to encourage the promotion, protection, and improvement of the overall public health, safety, economy, good order, appearance, convenience, and general welfare." I've been at that location for about six years now. Never did I think that I would have apartments around me, but two snuck up on me. When I heard this one was coming, I wanted to speak out about it, because in the past three months, we've had issues. And these issues, I'm going to relate to what I just said about the improvement of health. The issues with health that I've had around my office, I've had exposed trash cans and trash in the street by my office, not in the yard, in the actual street. People walking their dogs and animals in my yard at the office, using the restroom. And I have patients there. Safety, I think safety is a big issue in this case, because if we're talking safety, I don't see how seven apartments on less than an acre on a frontage road of five lanes with a turning lane with a 10-foot easement is going to be safe for any family that's living there. That property's not going to have any place for a communal area for walking dogs, for children to play in. I think that's dangerous, regardless of a three-foot tall hedge to block that or whatever it may be. Since November, there have been four issues of aggravated assault, burglary, or identity theft in the apartments that are already there. One of those included a shooting in the apartment that is directly beside my office at like 11 o'clock in the morning. My team, many of them are here, feels uneasy leaving in the evenings. I've had mail stolen to the tune of $15,000 of insurance checks out of my mailbox. That goes in tune with the burglaries going around that area. Economy, commercial generates more income. We all know that, not residential. Good order of appearance, I can argue the appearance. The apartment building behind me already has six shutters that are falling off the front of it. That's exactly where six of my operatories look out, the window of patients that are sitting there. General welfare, I don't feel that by adding seventy more apartments in this tiny lot, we'll be promoting, protecting, or improving the surrounding or established businesses that are already there.
Thank you, Dr. Seng. Commissioners, have any questions for Dr. Seng? Thanks for coming forward. I'll take one other. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Arthur Moore. I'm with Edward Jones Investments, just right next door to Brian to this lot. It was brought to my attention by Dr. Seng that this was going to happen. I'm not against development, by all means. I put a building there to run a business, so did Dr. Seng. But what's interesting is, when we bought that lot, developed the building, I was thinking I was buying on a commercial street that was promoted as commercial property, not residential. Brian made some very good points, and he did his homework, a lot of things that I did not know even was going on in what I call my neighborhood. I was completely unaware of that, Brian. But from a standpoint of working with the city of Florence and building a building, no, I did not read the code of enforcement's about residential apartments could be next to me one day. Should have have read that, probably so, but I didn't. Okay? But I built a commercial building that was on a commercial road that was being developed to bring businesses in. It was brought to my attention, and I made it very clear to some people I spoke to today that I did not buy the lot. I talked to the build, I talked to the bank that owned the lot. I did not buy the lot because of issues with the lot, with flooding. And some of y'all received this, could I pass out some copies to some of y'all to see?
Yes.
Okay. The flooding, this occurred in, I don't know, have you seen this picture? These are different pictures.
Do you have enough to go for all the commissioners?
Let me give you that copy. I gave a couple out here. This is the flooding that occurred in 2016. And as a business owner, I'm concerned that if the flooding can occur, then it could occur again. Sure, I'm sure proper drainage can be installed, and water runoff could occur, but as a neighboring property owner, that's kind of scary. And who's going to be liable for that water coming into my building? I guess I would file a insurance claim. They're going to ask me if did I have flood insurance? Well, if I didn't have a flood insurance, I guess I'm responsible. So now, am I possibly forced to buy flood insurance because of what the city now knows? There's an issue with water management. Water management and retention of water, water runoff to other people's property. Building a building, I know my developer was very concerned about it, and water carries a lot of issues and disease and so forth. This right here is a problem with that lot. I didn't buy the lot, because I didn't want the headaches associated with it. You know, I'm in the financial advisory industry, I have enough headaches going around a lot of times, but I did not want to even try to acquire the lot because of what could be an issue for me. So, you know, as a landowner and property owner, Brian made some very good points about issues with the neighborhood. I guess I'm making two issues, is we originally bought the property to have in a commercial area. Why this is on the books, legally, they can build, and the owner can build apartments. I get it. But from a visual standpoint, do we want Florence so chalked apart that, why? Why can't we be like Greenville or these other, Hilton Heaven, nice covenants and rules and restrictions? I don't know, but Florence, let's try to get there. The second thing is more of a legal issue, is where's this war going to go? Why should it be forced upon my property? And if it can be fixed, who's to say it's actually going to happen? We know that, it's documented, there's a flooding issue out there at this point. So, anyway, I'm just, and I'm all for development, nothing against Mr. Hopkins at all. I like people who take chances and invest in the community.
Thank you.
But this has more to do with other things. Thank you.
All right. Again, tonight, first of all, we are an advisory body. We make no ultimate decisions. The City Council will decide this, but that's not correct. I guess the point I was going to make is, if they meet the code, and city engineering approves it, and stormwater is controlled, Mr. Dudley, I'd like you to address this question. This body has no ability to change this, not allow it, or... We spend most of our time protecting residential from commercial encroachment. We're avid, we're rabid when it comes to commercial trying to be overzealous and trying to develop in areas that should be pristine, single-family. So we spend 99% of our time as commissioners protecting the residential. This may be the first time in history with me that we're trying to protect commercial from residential use. It doesn't mean that it hasn't happened in the past, but, Mr. Dudley, my question to you, and I don't want to get, and I'm going to give the opposing side a chance to talk also, but I don't want to address some of these questions, because these questions should come back up when we have, when we, I guess, further down the road. But how will the city address the flooding? And I do know for a fact that Celebration Center has stormwater retention built in for every lot. Celebration Lake is there for that very reason. Stormwater is piped along... Stormwater is piped along, parallel to Celebration Boulevard. And Mr. Hopkins, being a contractor, he probably will address this, how they will deal with that. But from the city's standpoint, Mr. Dudley, city engineering will make sure that any flooding issues, elevations, all that will protect Mr. Moore and Dr. Sang from flooding and stuff like that.
That is correct. I did speak with the engineering department because these were brought to my attention today. I had not seen those images until earlier today. And, you know, if you notice in some of those images, the lots around it are built up, which is the same thing that will happen here. And then the fear comes that that water then has to go somewhere, so it may shed onto the adjacent property owners. Our code does say that you cannot cause flooding or shed water onto adjacent properties. Therefore, that property would need to contain and divert that water into the stormwater system, which ultimately goes to Celebration Lake in this neighborhood, or in this area. It was a planned development, and that stormwater pond, I'm not an engineer, but in talking to them, that was planned, and it is made to account for that property as well as any of the developed or undeveloped property in that area. The images that were taken were during a major flooding event. I'm not sure of the circumstances surrounding that. There could have been, you know, an obstruction in the system somewhere. There could have been issue with the pond. During the Joaquin flooding of 2015 and the Matthew event in 2016, we did have areas in the city, because I'm also the floodplain coordinator. We did have localized areas in the city depending on localized rainfall and along the floodplain where there may be beaver dams or other obstruction that went above the 100-year into the 500-year. And I saw some areas go above the 500-year event during those events. So, they were, I guess, very abnormal events. And that's not to downplay any of that flooding because I know it only takes one time to ruin a structure. But we did have some pretty enormous rainfall events during that time and some localized flooding that was higher in some areas. We did have some obstructions with some storm drains that our guys were out trying to fix during that time. That could have been part of that. But that's definitely not what's seen there isn't normal in that circumstance. But we would take that into play, and I've already relayed those pictures to our engineering department so that when they do receive this plan, or if they do receive the development plan, they can take a closer look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So, my understanding is, once this gets approved or does not get approved, what, assuming it gets approved, it goes to staff?
That is correct.
From there, staff takes it all the way to permitting?
That's correct.
That's correct. So, it doesn't go to City Council or to anybody else. It goes strictly inside what the ordinances are, what the rules are, stuff like that.
That's right.
It brings me back to someone who went all the way through, got a building permit, and was within the rules and everything else at five points, put a big old sign there, followed all the rules. And the outcrys came in, and they took the sign down. It was completely legal. Got the permits, did everything it's supposed to do, but the sign's not there today. Okay? So, you know, what these people, I think, are trying to say is, and I know Dr. Sang, and he and I both are dentists. I'm an old surgeon. I understand, I had never seen this before. And I know Louis. Louis, I consider both of them friends of mine. I'm a developer also. But, you know, the rules, I understand the rules of the rules, but this is their last time for input whatsoever on the bare minimum requirements that the city will say, "This will meet our requirements." And I know, you know, value in engineering. I get it. You know, you're going to want the most for your return and stuff like that. But I got to understand that when it leaves here, it goes into a staffer's hands, and no one's going to do anything about it. They meet the requirements that they're supposed to be. So, all this water, I understand 16 was huge, but all that Celebration Lake is accounted for for this entire Celebration Road development. Is that right?
Well, the engineer on the project would have to show that, yes.
Okay, all right. I mean, from the city's standpoint, but everything's been engineered for all this to be completely developed?
That is my understanding, and if it's not, or it cannot satisfy the city engineers upon their review, then further retention would be necessary.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Dudley? All right. I will offer comments for anyone that is in favor of this. Welcome to come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Louis Hopkins. I'm the builder of this property. I do not own this property. I think the stormwater issues will only get better. The stormwater was designed as a plan for the whole Celebration area by Bob Weaver with Weaver Engineering. There's a three-foot in diameter stormwater pipe near this property. We would end up putting in a catch basin to drain this whole property and build it up. So, the stormwater issue is definitely going to go away. The negative issues that Dr. Sang spoke about, I built those two buildings. That's the first time I've heard of any of that. So, it's kind of odd that tonight's the first time you hear negative stuff about property you developed. But I'm open to answer any questions you might have about this project. I do feel it meets all the zoning requirements. Like I said, I'm not the owner, but I'm sure the owner checked into all that when he purchased the property. You know, I don't think we're asking for anything that's not laid out in the city of Florence's books.
Mr. Chair, are these going to be rentals, Louis, or owners selling?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you, because another Realtor owns the property, so I'm not sure what he's going to do with it.
I see. Okay.
I'm sure the layout of the property affects where parking would be. If you put parking in the back instead of the front, would that have?
I don't think that that would be an issue. I think if, you know, if they wanted to reverse the parking to the rear, that would be an issue.
If you went through the staff's report on this, it clearly is illegal use of that property.
Correct.
The general commercial is the most lenient zoning that we have. And consequently, it limits us as commissioners. You know, even though if we feel your passion and feel that it may not be the highest and best use of that property, the owner has the right to do really what he wants to with it. And so consequently, I'm giving everyone a chance to voice, not everyone. If you have any questions of Mr. Hopkins, I'll ask him to sit down. You come to the podium because we have everything recorded, so you have to ask your question at the podium. Again, this is non-typical. I normally do not allow, or we normally don't have, comments or public hearing with a sketch plan. Mr. Hopkins, rather than take more questions, I think it's going to delay this meeting tonight. And we're doing this only out of courtesy to the crowd. Is there anything else you can add to this project? Can you share with us the type of construction or anything that will maybe make them feel a little bit better that is, I mean, exterior materials, landscaping, is, I'm sure it'll all be by code?
The city requires landscaping buffers around the whole property. I'm sure the building will be a brick building, all brick building. There will be, you know, considerable green space. All that's in that site plan. So, it's already calculated impervious area, impervious area to meet the city's requirements. So, it's not like this will be, you know, just a big building and all parking. There will definitely be landscaping and green space, you know, to exceed the city's recommendations or requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, if there's anyone else that would like to speak in favor, I said we will do two each. Not seeing any, I will close the comment section of this and call for a motion. I would like to caution the commissioners that we can't let emotions play in this decision.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's kind of what I was going to kind of lead into. This is a difficult situation because we, as a body, are charged with looking out for the citizens of the community. We've got guidelines. We've got rules. We've got laws that we have to follow. And we certainly have limitations of things we can and cannot do. Unfortunately, this is one of those areas where we, though we empathize with both sides, we're sort of limited by what we can and can't do by the city code and the city process. And, yeah, I'm sitting here listening to all that, and I absolutely empathize with everything that was said by the neighbors of this property. The city and municipalities use zoning to protect development and protect the citizens of the community from one another. That's how, that's how the process is handled through the zone. And honestly, we have that occur from time to time. We have contentious disagreements, spirited disagreements about zoning, and those are our most difficult cases to handle. They're emotional, and they, as some of you have stated, they deal with money and investment. Unfortunately, I don't see how this is that. And, you know, this is just, the builder is charged with coming before the planning commission to say, is this, is he adhering to the guidelines of the city requirements? And, you know, the things that Dr. Sang mentioned are serious, I think. I don't know where, what the history is with those incidences, but I think it's a city issue, and it's a city concern. And if I were on staff, I would want to know why that's happening. But I don't think that this body has the authority to say, "Well, we're concerned about all this on this side, therefore, we can't turn down this sketch plan that this builder has submitted," which is reasonable and follows all of the guidelines. So, it is a bit of a quandary, and I don't have an answer for those of you who are opposed to this. I would say to the owner and possibly to the builder, Louis, I don't know what kind of involvement you have once you build your building. You move on to the next. So, I don't know what you have to do with what happens once you walk away. But certainly, were someone to have a history of producing properties in the city that were problematic and caused trouble, at some point, that would catch up to someone, I would think. Because at some point, if you're in the development business, you're in the zoning business as well, and you're going to need to make zoning requests of the city or changes and that sort of thing. So, you know, I would encourage everybody who does have the ability and possibly the requirement to see some of these issues get addressed, do so. I just don't think this board is that. I just don't, I don't think it's our charge. I don't know what else we can do, but that's my comment. And no matter how, how much I empathize, and I do, and nothing, nothing strikes at you more totally than something that you perceive that is going to cost you financially. And so, that's what I'm hearing from those folks, and so I empathize with them. And I think that the city needs to spend some time with this project and with that property and dig into it and try to figure out what's going on and see if we can't get a handle on it. That's my two cents.
Thank you. I still have a call for a motion. Public hearing is closed. I'm sorry.
Well, I would just like to be perfectly clear. The sketch plan fits all the criteria that the city asks for. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. We, you know, the things that trigger sketch plan review for planning commission is typically the number of lots or the improvement of public infrastructure. So, if it's over, if it's five or more lots that are proposed for subdivision, then it requires planning commission review. And if it requires the installation of a public street or public water and sewer, then it requires planning commission review. So, those are the triggers for the sketch plan review and the subdivision review process. In this case, the townhome development is over the five, so that was the trigger. Because even though they may or may not subdivide those properties, townhomes are intended to be a single-family attached use, and they have to show that they can be subdivided. So, the subdivision in this case would be, I think, seven individual townhome structures and then the common space that supports that. So, we did review it from our standpoint, from a engineering standpoint for the layout, from a zoning standpoint from the layout, as well as a fire safety and fire marshal review. And it did meet the requirements of the Unified Development Code. And so, we as staff did review it, and then it goes on to you guys for verification, so.
Well, if it's meeting all the criteria from the city, and they're within their legal rights to do this, I would find it hard to deny it. I wouldn't have any grounds to deny this if they're meeting all qualifications and it is within their rights to do so.
So, would you put that in a formal motion?
I move that this sketch plan be accepted as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Any further discussion?
I just, I said on both sides of this coin, I'm a developer also. Also, I've got investments that I would hate to see shootings beside. So, I do agree with you. Our hands are kind of tied when it comes to the law. We have to follow what we're charged to follow with, no matter who presents it. We have to follow the rules. I think City Council can change that. If enough people outcry, that's where you go. That's how things happen. But I agree with you. We have to follow the rules. But I would just point out that, you know, Mr. Hopkins is a builder and developer, and I'm sure whoever's building for is the developer. And those folks rub shoulders and need help and have to sell things with other business people, just like I do and everybody else does. So, there's, you know, the consequences of everything you do, but that's just my two cents.
I have a comment also, and then I'll call for the vote. If we make one exception to the rule of law, when will we make another exception? It's the only ground that we, as a body, can stand on. We've had some pretty contentious meetings in the past six months, but we followed the rules. And there was, there were a lot of upset people, very upset. And, but we can go to bed at night knowing that we did our job, whether we liked it or not, and voted in a way that was based on the rules. So, I'm proud, but I'll let you know after this vote how proud I am of this commission. But my comment and suggestion is, the best possibilities for Dr. Sang, Mr. Moore, and the fine restaurateur sitting in front of us, your best opportunity is talk to the owner. owner. I know Mr. Etheridge, he is a reasonable man, and that is your basic course of curing this. And Dr. Tsang, I know that you have talked with him, he seems to be a compassionate person, maybe, and of course, I'm not trying to get you to lose a building opportunity.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're going to do our work and our job tonight, but your job is not over yet. Your job is to continue to fight. With that said, any further comments? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those against? All right, so the motion carries, and thank you for your participation tonight. It was a heartfelt, passionate one. And with that said, we're going to move right to our next item on the agenda, and those that would like to leave, you're certainly welcome to. All right, PC 20-22-03, this is a request to rezon. And, I'll let them get out. Mr. Johnson, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. How are y'all doing?
You like looking at the new cameras, right?
Oh, I know, the high def.
The clarity is amazing on those cameras.
Can't hide behind the cameras anymore, that's right.
Your report, please.
Yes, sir. So, this is a rezoning request. The property owner would like to rezone from NC 6.2 to NC 6.3. Here is 706 Norfolk Street, and from the vicinity map, being on site, everything around it is residential, with the exception of the CSX rail yard to the south, which is the building that you can see there on the, on the aerial. And here's a location map, a little bit closer, it is just a vacant lot, it's currently undeveloped. So, zoning, it is currently NC 6.2, Neighborhood Conservation 6.2, and that does allow, it permits residential uses such as single-family detached, and it also permits duplexes. There are some conditional permits, it conditionally permits limited commercial use, like a, like a home occupation and in-home childcare. So, the property owner would like to step up to NC 6.3, a little bit higher intensity, and that would have the added conditional uses, so everything the NC 6.2 permits, but then now you get into conditional uses of multiplex and also multifamily. And this lot does meet the minimum requirements for the NC 6.3 standards. It needs a minimum lot width of 50 feet, and it needs a minimum square footage of 6,000 square feet, so it does meet those requirements. All right, and future land use, it calls for public and institutional, but it is surrounded by everything Neighborhood Conservation, so most likely, it would remain Neighborhood Conservation unless it's picked up by someone like CSX or purchased by someone like the City of Florence. All right, here's a site photo of the vacant lot, and you can just see houses, houses next door. The, this is kind of the proposed multiplex. This is a rendering that was given to us by the applicant, so it would look something like this. This is not the finished product, but this is kind of what he envisions on the site, and the multiplex is meant to mirror a single-family detached home with a single front door, you have the parking in the rear, but it could accommodate, and what he would like to do is accommodate up to four families within the structure. So, multifamily, we have multiplex and multifamily. A multiplex is a residential building that is constructed to look like a large, single-family detached residence. It can be a triplex, which has three families, or a quadruplex, which has four, which is what he is, he is proposing, if he were to get the rezoning. And then a multifamily, which would also be conditionally permitted if we decide, if the commission decides to step up the zoning, is a building that includes three or more dwelling units, which is not designed as townhome or multiplex buildings, which would include apartments. A multifamily would include something like apartments. So, here are just some of the conditions that he would have to meet. He wants to do a multiplex, but again, a multifamily is conditionally permitted in this location. It would be difficult due to the size of the lot, putting in the landscape buffer yards on either side to buffer it from the residential uses, but it's not outside the realm of possibilities. And again, we just have some lot and building standards that must be met if he does want to undertake this type of construction. And the lot does meet the minimums for, for the multiplex. Let me make sure I covered all my bases. But in closing, city staff would recommend a denial of the rezoning, just for the fact that historically, currently, future land use is single-family detached. The owner is proposing a multiplex, but there, there is the small possibility that multifamily could be, could be placed in that location, meeting all the conditions. So, for those reasons, we just do not think it lines up with the character of the neighborhood. The only call we got from the public, we did get one call from the public, and it was just sort of an anonymous, what I would assume is a neighbor saying that, just worried that it would turn into multifamily and not just a quadruplex. So, that, that does conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I want to clarify something that you said. You said it could possibly, or might line up as a multifamily use.
Right. If we, if planning commission decides and city council decides to make this a more intense use, the owner's vision is to do a multiplex, a quadruplex, like the rendering showed, but if they wanted to do multifamily, they would just have to put a, they would have to meet the conditions, which would include a 10-foot buffer yard on this, on the west side, a 10-foot buffer yard on the east side. Obviously, the landscaping that they would have to do, it's, it's a very tight lot. I'm not saying it's not possible, it's improbable, but you have to think that it's not beyond the realm of possibility, that it, it could become multifamily with this rezoning.
And you told them, they know this.
They do, they, they are aware of what can be done with this zoning.
Okay. Any further questions, the staff? Hearing none, we do have a public hearing, so, Mr. Johnson, thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone would like to come forward and discuss in favor of this, please do. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Board members, my name is Kenneth Muldro, and I am the one that is requesting the rezoning of this piece of property here. I think it's, it's enhancements to the city. I do believe in the city revitalization, revitalization like they're doing downtown and across the city of Florence, you know, the city of building houses and all that kind of stuff. And I think this is a good idea. I don't think it would, I'm not putting this, I mean, for financial reasons, but I'm not doing this for big families. I'm kind of catering to people that's coming into town, working out of McLeod, these nurses that, you know, do these, what do they call?
Traveling nurses.
Traveling nursing type thing. That's what I'm gearing it at. But I gotta go by these guidelines to be able to do that. I'm not looking to put a whole lot of family, families that have five, six, 10 people, no, it's, it's not nothing like that. You've got a, a picture of what it would be like, that's a preliminary fix there. I think it's something, I think it's something that the neighborhood would, would enjoy. It's a good layout, and will probably be close to the picture that you see. And I don't think it would be, like I say, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to the city of Florence. I do a lot of work, I'm in construction too, so I do a lot of work in Florence also. And, get it straight for the record, I haven't bought the property yet. I know you said I own the property, but I hadn't got there yet, but I'm trying to figure out what I can do if I buy the property. So, I need to know where I stand before I purchase the property.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Muldro?
Have you looked into doing, meeting the city's specifications for it to exist in the current zoning?
Yes, yes.
Is it possible?
Yes, we're talking to...
You could do a duplex. You could do a single-family home, you could do a duplex, but unless he gets that greater intensity, he would not be able to do a multiplex.
Right, right. But I'm just trying to see where I stand at before I purchase the property. I mean, I could do the duplex, but I'm trying to do the quadruplex, which would be, because of the size of the lot, it'd be more beneficial.
Sure, okay, I understand, thank you.
Mr. Muldro, I think you may have heard earlier in one of my comments that the majority of our passion up here is to protect the single family. The, the individuals that have been there for a good while, they're used to the quiet and the peace of the neighborhood, not that four families are going to disturb it in any way.
Right.
I'm kind of relieved to hear that you have not purchased that yet, and maybe that was a flaw on your part, but, and it wasn't, it wasn't a flaw by any means. I just wonder, because we started getting into the gray area of getting off the plan, and remember, I was telling this other group, you know, when we make an exception in one area, you know, we have to be able to face the music and ultimately have to make other exceptions, which we don't like to do. I'm still befuddled by Mr. Johnson's comment. I mean, I want to give you every opportunity to maximize, and I admire your savviness and wanting to go out, and you're, you're an entrepreneur, obviously, and...
Yes, sir.
I don't want to deny you of that, if it is something that staff can paint a picture that gets you to where you want to be. I don't, I don't know if we have that direction from staff that, although they have recommended denial of this. Mr. Dudley, would you, and thank you, Mr. Muldro.
Sure.
There's, there's some gray area here that I'm not comfortable with.
I think as it exists now, it can support single-family detached, as well as up to the level of duplex development, which is another, is a single-family attached type housing, when you, which is both, could be rental properties or, you know, for homeownership, either one. When you step up to the NC 6.3, it then allows multiplexes, which in and of themselves, because of the design standards we have in place, can fit into some neighborhood areas because of some of the design standards. They're made to look like a single-family house, although they're larger, they're broken up on the inside, but they're not designed, they're designed only to be rental properties and not designed for homeownership. Also, under the 6.3 zoning designation, are true full-fledged multifamily, which would be an apartment complex. This site is, is quite small for that, but as Derek pointed out, you know, potentially, if it were zoned that and a creative engineer came in, you could potentially develop it as that. And, and as we know, when we rezon things, we're, we often know what the use may be, that the current owner's proposed use may be, but under the zoning code, there is a whole collection of uses that could also be put to use there. So, we often have to protect the neighborhood and the adjacent properties from those uses as well, because although the current owners or developers may have the best of intentions and the best of ideas, properties sell all the time, every day, and, and we're not looking out for immediate, you know, planning and development, but also down the road 10 years from now to preserve that neighborhood, so.
Mr. Muldro, this is something that we're faced with quite often. Your sketch was great, it gave us a, a great indication of the quality of work that you're going to do there. What concerns us is once we change that zoning to where it could allow multifamily, let's say that the building burns down, you know, certainly don't wish anything like that, and you change of heart, or you sell it to somebody else, and they decide they want multifamily. Well, we have already zoned it, just like the zoning was correct for those townhouses at Celebration Boulevard, we can't stop that. And consequently, so if we change it to the 0.3, although your intentions are great, you're, we have to protect the long term, and the long term is, you know, 10 years from now, 15, 20 years from now. So, that's what Mr. Dudley is saying, you know, once we cross that threshold, there's no turning back. Yes, you may just put the four units there or duplex, in fact, you can put a duplex there now without even having to change the zoning. Have you thought about, does it cash flow very well based on what you're paying for to just put a duplex?
Well, I thought about it, but like I said...
I'm sorry, I need for you to come to the podium, and that was my fault. That was my fault, Mr. Muldro, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have considered that, but like I said, because of the size of the property, I was trying to see how it would benefit me more.
Yeah, sure.
And not just me, whoever my contenders are there.
Right.
I'm looking out for the interests of my tenants also, and also the city of Florence. I've been here, I don't live in the city of Florence, but I live in Florence County, and I've been here practically all my 58 years. So, I have considered that, but I was just hoping if I could just get it rezoned to that where I needed to have it at, so I'll be able to do, get maximizing.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you for coming back up. There's no one else to ask to speak in favor, you can have a seat, Mr. Muldro, thank you. So, I'll close the public hearing portion of this, and call for a motion.
So, this is, I almost wish this one had gone first, because it would have helped us with the fact that the one we already did, I think we did them in reverse order, but I think this is kind of what I was alluding to earlier, was, you know, the zoning issues. And, you know, our charge is to protect property owners, and, you know, zoning, zones are established based on a plan, and all the surrounding properties around this particular property are 6.2. And we really, it is a difficult thing for us to do, to change the zone of an area, particularly when it's surrounded by something else zoned differently. And it's a fundamental charge, I think, that we have, we have to look out for those property owners. So, I, I would encourage you to, I'm going to make a motion that we deny, but, but, but tell, you know, Mr. Muldro to, that I think what he presented was beautiful, and it just isn't going to fit the zone in that particular neighborhood. And so, if you can meet the city's restrictions and rules, then I think we're all for that, but we've got to protect the surrounding property owners. I just don't think we have any choice in that matter, honestly. So, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion, we deny.
Can I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion, a second to deny the request, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, and I'm going to ask for a show of hands this time. All those in favor, show of hands? It is unanimous? Oh, is it? All those against, show of hands?
Against him getting, against him not...
Excuse me, in favor of him getting the change.
No, no, we're voting on the, the motion.
Right, right.
To deny.
So, the motion is to deny, and everybody voted to deny except for you. So, you're voting to deny?
No.
So, you're voting to...
I don't want to deny him. Well, I see, I don't want to deny him for something he can make, because I know that... Well, I see, I don't want to deny him for something he can make, because I know that neighborhood. And to me, that would be a good building. So, I'm not going to deny him.
So, you abstain?
Yes.
Five to deny and one abstention. Mr. Muldro, I wish you great success. And thank you for your efforts and participation. Okay. The next item is, Mr. Dudley, oh, Ms. Diane is going to discuss commissioner training.
The State Planning Enabling Act requires that people that serve on boards and commissions must complete, when you're first appointed to any board, six hours of orientation training. For Dr. Lohan, and I have records of the rest of you, except for Mr. Bacot, attending the orientation training when you were first appointed. You're in luck back in the day, even as recently as a couple of years ago, you had to do it in person, and it was a six-hour training. Now, they have changes, so you can do it online, and there's no charge. So, you can do it in your own time. And in your packet, I did give you the information for that. Then, once you have your orientation training, you're also required to have three hours a year of continuing education. We have been rather lax about enforcing that. I do have a, and that continuing education can be done individually or as a group, and because everybody is busy, I've been looking into it, and there is a large number of courses that you can do on your own, that they can track, that you participate in it, and so you can get credit for it. So, you can either do it that way, or we can, we'd be happy to set up some training, bring everybody in, but obviously, that's difficult to do. I don't know if you'd want to spend another hour and a half on a training session on a Tuesday night. So, I'm going to email to everybody the information with the links. And if you want us to, you know, if you see something and you want to do it as a group, that'd be great. Just let us know. Otherwise, just throughout, you have one year, the calendar year, to get it done, and let us know that you've completed it, and that'll take care of it. And the purpose for that is because, like you said, you're making these big, important decisions. The city doesn't want to be liable for somebody to come up and say, "You guys don't know anything about zoning. You don't know anything about the law. You don't know anything about planning. How can you tell me that I can't put this building here?" So, that protects you, it protects the city. So, that's the purpose behind the training. So, I'll be sending those out tomorrow.
Does that include pizza and self-drinks?
[laughing].
Personally.
I'm not concerned for pizza.
We'll buy that with the big planning commission budget we've got.
Elaine, I have a question. When I first came on, we met up in the conference room with the group.
So, okay. I could not find...
So, was that considered part of the orientation?
Yes, sir, that was. So, you do remember doing it? I thought you had. I just wasn't completely sure.
I do.
Okay.
While my name wasn't included in those, a group of individuals on that date.
Okay.
I do remember doing that, but whatever training that is necessary for me, I don't mind doing it.
Okay. I'll go back and look.
Well, he was probably like me. Continuing ed is what we probably need.
Yeah.
I was there for that orientation too.
Yeah.
But once a year, you've got to have continuing ed.
Three years, three hours a year.
So, that's probably what we got.
So, the six-hour, I mean, how quick do I have to have that done?
You've got, you have to do that within the first year. So, the three hours wouldn't apply to you. Everybody else would have to do three hours.
Got it.
I hate it for you.
Excellent course in Las Vegas. I'm going to try it.
[inaudible]
Yeah, but you'd rather go to Vegas. I'm going to write it off.
I need a guide.
And along the way, as we have maybe a shorter agenda, I may work in a time when we might could go back in executive session room for about 15 minutes. And like you pointed out, maybe some of the weaknesses in the technical review process, maybe we could have city engineer, city fire marshal, and different folks come in.
Put an absolute deadline on it. I mean, like, if it's 15 minutes, the clock goes off at 15.
15 minutes, that's right. That's right. No questions. It'll take questions afterwards.
You've got to drive only to the beach all day.
That's right.
Your sacrifice is...
But we could have some short little education sessions to kind of get everybody up to speed, so that we're feeling more comfortable with all that. Because I definitely want everyone feeling comfortable with it.
So, what are you looking at possibly starting this, what time of day?
I was thinking as part of the planning commission meeting. We could, we could...
It sounds like right now it's going to...
Not tonight.
Not tonight. No, I'm looking at the agenda, and I didn't think tonight was about to start.
We're already there.
The one night when we had a five-minute meeting, maybe then would...
Yeah. I guess the days of breaking the record are over now.
That's right. That's right. But we could retire to executive session for 15 minutes, do a brief review of a section of the code, and then we could break back out and go about our business. And I think it would be good.
Sounds good.
And we could, we could look into counting that as part of it. We might could get credit for the continuing ed too, for that too.
I hope so, yeah.
Yeah. And that way, we'll get an hour along and along.
All right. Call for a motion, no jury.
Second.
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 All right.
Second.